We begin by starting the new round of session of City Council. We have ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 031-01, we go to amend that by resolution. If approved by resolution 0031-201-1, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick titled "Revenue on Finance." Ordinance 031-302, is an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and Matrix Overlord Urban Renewal LLC. I'm not sure if you have in your agenda that we are supposed to be having a public hearing, we're supposed to have a meeting tonight, it won't be happening, so that's why I did not read it, so the public hearing will not be happening tonight. Ordinance -031-302, is an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and Matrix Newsweek Garage Urban Renewal LLC. Orders on first reading. Ordinance 041-01, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Adding a Loading Zone. Ordinance 01-302, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Adding One Parking Zone, 304 Redmond Street, and removing Two Parking Zones, 36 East Chester Circle and 304 Redmond Street. Ordinance 041-303, being held at the request of the City Attorney. Ordinance 041-304, is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, No Parking at Any Time on Joyce Kilmer Avenue North from Patterson Street to French Street. We're going now to resolutions. Resolution 01-041-01, to approve amendment. Resolution 302, approve table from 31613 to 32913. Resolution 303, authorize refund for违禁税销售 certificates. Resolution 304, is being held at the request of the licensees attorney. Resolution 305, is being held at the request of the city clerk. Resolution 306, is being held at the request of the city attorney. Resolution 307, approve amendment of resolution 011359, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $467.50 to Benedict and Almane for Boswell versus Feaster, from $17,408 to $17,875.50. Resolution 308, approve amendment of resolution 011358, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $544.00 to Benedict and Almane for Anderson versus Anthony Caputo, from $1,929.50 to $2,473.50. Resolution 309. I did 50 cents. Resolution 309, approve award of contract with EGL, Rastatolos, A, Doing Business as a Maker Corporation, Recharge and Auto Paying for Automotive Body Repairs for the Police Department. This is a 12-month term, beginning on April 4th, 2013, and ending on April 3rd, 2014, not to exceed $30,000 hours. Resolution 310, approve authorization to repeat, this is requested by the senior citizen resource center for food products for the senior center. Resolution 311, approve award of contract with HD Supply Water Works, LTV, for purgash and deliver cold waters in the res- need of transceivers, units, and accessories, not to exceed $120,935. Resolution 312, approve request for street closing, requested by LMBJ, Lobo Buchans Medical School, for Lobo Buchans Medical School, from location to be held at State Theater, location in Mr. Nally between Union Avenue and George Street on Monday, May 20, 2013, from 7:45 to 9:30 p.m., police exchange agreement required. Resolution 313, approve professional service agreement with Inovate Data Solutions, Doing Business as Power DMS Inc., for annual power switch subscription for the Police Department, not to exceed $5,788 dollars. Resolution 314, approve amendment of resolutions 091-276, change order number two with Tiffany Electric Inc., for sample street and avenue traffic sample, this is a credit of $3749.25. Resolution 315, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure, requested by Top Line Construction Corporation, the reason is to wheel and pave the Johnson &amp; Johnson Ward Harvester Drive Rate from Johnson Drive to the train trestle plus mill and pave Johnson Drive with the intersection of the two driveways. Road closure Johnson Drive from Albany Street to George Street on Saturday, April 6th, 2013, with alternate rates of April 13th, 2013, and April 20th, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 316, authorize application, accept and execution of grant agreement for 2013, the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety, for the Clinton of City of Sibyl Campaign Enforcement Grant. Resolution 317, authorize application, accept and execution of grant agreement for 2014, the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety, for 2014, the National Highway Traffic Safety Fund. Resolution 318, authorize application, accept and execution of grant agreement for 2014, the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Highway Traffic Safety, for 2014, Foundation Safety Enforcement and Education Fund. Resolution 319, authorize application, accept and execution of grant agreement for 2013, for University Safety Bureau Committee Grant Application, amount is $60,000. Resolution 320, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2013. Resolution 321, is being held at the request of the city attorney. Resolution 322, approve award of contract with Gold Star Group, Doing Business as Howard Johnson Express Inc., for emergency housing shelter, this is for important security need on April 4th, 2013, and ending on April 3rd, 2014. Resolution 323, approve amendment of resolution 051152, with Columbia Technology Services, for PE staff rowings and specification of George Street CCTV project in cat format for the Police Department, the amount is $7,502 dollars, approval of this change order would not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Resolution 324, approve award contract with the National Services Associates, for 72 February from municipal court, 10 months, starting April 4th, 2013, and ending on January 16, 2014, not to exceed $8,000. Resolution 325, approve request for street closing, requested by Groper's University for the Safety for Groper's Day, the location is Hamilton Street between College Avenue and George Street, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Location, Sydney Street between College Avenue and C. Carr Street, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and this is on Saturday, April 27th, 2013, police exchange agreement required. Resolution 326, approve request for use of city property by the New Brunswick Recreation Department and Civic League of Wigan and Brunswick for annual health care and fitness challenge at recreation park on Saturday, November 1st, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Resolution 327, approve request for use of city property, requested by Groper's and Greenwich Council for great games event on River Park and Pavilion on Saturday, April 13, 2013, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Resolution 328, approve request for use of amplification, this was requested by Brent Mallow for the grand opening day celebration on 98 Albany Street, on Saturday, April[581.82]
First eighteen months as the project is leasing up. And then in the five years after that, that two percent increase will accrue. That will jump up to that two percent rate as if it had been in effect in the sixth year.
Thank you.
And for the record, how long of the exemption is it? How many years?
For thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. So I guess my next question would be, what is the impact on the school system in terms of potential for more children to be in the schools without the school district getting any revenue?
Mr. Pittman, somebody else?
As we've discussed on this...
We have now, it's up there.
Yeah. Question before, I mean, these units here are a combination of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. The number of children that would be generated out of here probably be relatively small, if any. As Councilors said, there's really nothing there right now. The existing land taxes that are being paid there, the credit for them is given against the pilot and those taxes go to the jurisdictions that they get now. So the school district and the county get those same taxes that they do now.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pittman?
Yeah, how many two-bedroom units in the building?
How many two-bedroom?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six two-bedroom, so. Could be a sizable number of children in the school system. We don't know yet.
Well, seventy percent of the households in New Brunswick are households that do not have children under eighteen. So the vast majority of households in the city are not households that are going to be contributing children to the school districts. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Cradville was asking some similar questions. We looked at analysis of some of the projects in this area previously and they were generating, you know, very, very few, really a handful of children who were going to the public schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answers to those questions. I just wanted to make one point. I think that there's really no reason that the ordinance couldn't include some of those facts that we just got out of this conversation. Basically, the way the ordinance reads, it's just, the council is just authorizing the mayor to enter any agreement whatsoever. The terms are not spelled out in the law you're passing right now. And so what that means is that the people who see those public notices and see what's going on don't have the details on this unless they come here and ask. And even so, I mean, you're going to probably go ahead with this vote right away. So there's not any time to really analyze that data or respond. I'd just, again, ask in the future when these huge, long-term agreements are being made, that the details be spelled out in advance of this. I know the city has a public information officer. I did request this information yesterday and...
Did you receive it?
No, I did. I just received it now in this meeting. So, you know, I think that the public should have known eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The public should have known how many years it is. And none of that stuff's really spelled out in the agreement or the law you're about to pass, so.
Proposal agreement that's been filed in the clerk's office since it was introduced on first reading.
Okay. Well, I'm saying that the...
But thank you.
The thing that's publicly put out there, the public notice, should include the details. There's no reason not to, but I mean, I don't think...
Thank you. Welcome. Anybody else who wishes to address the council on leasing specific ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Local.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance zero four one two oh one is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter ten, vehicles and traffic, adding one parking zone, local redmond, and deleting two parking zones. Any comments from the public on these specific ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
No, it's a better question.
Just since this is about the garage, how will the parking garage work? Will it be a parking authority operation or will it be privately run?
This will be operated by Matrix. And the numbers I referred to before include this garage and the combined, the residential combined.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on these specific ordinance? Amy Dunn.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Local.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance zero four one two oh one is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter ten, vehicles and traffic, adding one parking zone, local redmond, and deleting two parking zones. Thirty-sixty Chester Circle and local redmond Street.
I move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, April seventeenth for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Second.
Local. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance zero four one two oh three is being held at request of the city administrator. Ordinance zero four one two oh four is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter ten, vehicles and traffic, no parking at any time on Joyce Kilmer Avenue North from Patterson Street to French Street.
Move the ordinance setting down April seventeenth, same, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Mr. Pittman, second.
Second.
Local. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Aye. Resolutions. We have resolutions. Three oh one, new resolutions. Three thirty-six, we are holding resolution three thirty. Resolutions two twenty-one. Resolution three oh six, three oh five, and three oh four. And, let me just... Anybody has any questions regarding from the public regarding any of the resolutions except the ones that are being held? Yes, Mr. Pittman?
That's Charles Cradville, Palm Street. The sixth, resolution number six, oh, I'm sorry, it's out.
It's being held.
Okay. I believe that's all I have. I'll answer that during public comment.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on any of these resolutions? Have you done?
Move the resolution.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, anybody from the council wishes to address the public?
May I?
Anybody from the public wishes to address the council at this time?
Mr. Cradville?
Mr. Cradville, Palm Street. Wanted to ask a couple of questions. First and foremost, the sixth resolution here for Ian V. Boudagno. I wanted to know, is it true that that's the case that the city has spent the most money fighting this year?
Do you have any information?
I think it's probably the largest one this year.
And what would be the reason for that? Why is it so important that the...
Because the plaintiffs are pushing it. There's some indication from court that they prefer to grant some of the things. The plaintiffs want to push it further. The state and the Democratic Party and the Republican Party don't want to push it any further. And we have to appear while the matter's concluded.
Okay. Wanted to also ask about the environmental engineering firm, Bird's Saw. Sure everybody's heard about what happened there. Is there any business the city still does with Bird's Saw? Because I know that they may not be able to complete their work. Last I heard, they had done design work for recreation park, but...
In this of my knowledge, that's the only project that we have to handle.
Is it outstanding? Is there still work to be done or is it completed and the relationships?
Mr. Pittman, direct to address.
Yes, we have a current design contract with them. They're still in the process of working on that. We've been in contact with the landscape architect that we've been working with there. He said they are continuing with that work. They haven't stopped on that and they intend to complete it.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council at this time? Yes, sir. Name and address, please?
Sure.
Hello. Hi, my name's Justin, 290 George Street. So I'm from NJ Perk. We're a statewide student-run nonprofit group. We're currently running a campaign to stop corporate money in politics. So we've actually gathered over eleven hundred petitions and talked to fifteen small businesses in New Brunswick, local small businesses that have decided to endorse our campaign. So actually, we're going to be having a panel discussion next week, Wednesday, so April tenth, from eight to nine p.m. And we'd want to extend an invitation to the city council so you can learn a bit more about the Citizens United Supreme Court ruling. Also, I want to ask the council if they have yet to formulate a position, the Citizens United Supreme Court ruling itself. I think I've been in touch with the city clerk and sent you guys back his emails as well. So I was wondering if you guys have formulated an invitation?
Well, as a council, we have a preliminary opinion, but I personally, I know, I've read the information. And when I read it, at this time, personally, I'm not talking for everybody else, but for me, I think that at this point, we, my opinion is that I'd rather, you know, this is something bigger than us in the sense of what's going on. And for now, I'd rather go by what this law says now and keep the way it is in that sense in terms of the contribution. I think that what we have now is working, kind of. So that's my own personal opinion. I wouldn't want to get more into that at this time.
Okay. Thank you for your...
Anybody else wishes to address the council at this time?
Okay, thank you very much.
But then, where is the meeting?
So the panel discussion. It'll be featuring a couple of professors as well as one of our advocates, Min Tretton. It'll be at the NJC Lounge in Douglas Campus Center. So it'll actually be right off of George Street.
Thank you, Justin.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wishes to address the council at this time? Mr. Pittman?
Sorry, one more thing, two more things. I wanted to ask, did I see Mr. Lachlan's name on some kind of event that he'll be speaking publicly or he did earlier?
Did so earlier.
Just today, how'd it go?
Felt pretty good. After that, we'll begin to talk to somebody who's at the meeting.
Sorry, I couldn't make it. I was busy, but it's good to see that at least the administrators out there, speaking with residents and taking questions. I also just wanted to take a moment to encourage everybody to vote, April sixteenth. You know, New Brunswick, New Brunswick's fought very hard to be able to have school board elections and that election's going to be on April sixteenth. And I think people should do their best to really research all the candidates and as well as the ballot question and get out there and vote.
But there's going to be a forum with all the candidates waiting to deliver.
I'm thrilled that there's going to be a forum.
At Sacred Park, in Liberty Square, at San Luis Pico.
Yes. Cool. Thank you.
At this time, I have to go first, but I just wanted to make a few announcements. We have free firewood for the resident city residents. So if you need a threat, due to who I can send, we have a lot of firewood to give out free for the residents. It's on Wednesdays from one p.m. to three p.m. And you only have to, you need to show proof of residency. And this is a one-time only offer.
What, literally go to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Joyce Kilmer at the sports complex, Joyce Kilmer, Joyce Kilmer Avenue. Also, I was made aware today that there is an author called Lisa Hunary. She does books, again, Nikki Fitz says, different books that she does. And one of the kids from New Brunswick wrote to her, asking her to buy about New Brunswick. And he was selected and she did a whole chapter of New Brunswick with this kid from Rachel School, Miss Alexis Garcia. So they're going to have, she's going to be there, they're going to give, the kids are going to be there with the families, we should go support them. It's going to be a partners and novels on April fourteenth at two p.m. So I think it's really good to support our kids and that they, you know, she was able to put him in.
That's the Rutgers Bookstore.
I'm sorry. On Summers Street. Absolutely. Yes, sir, before we finish, you want to...
Yes, I'm sorry. Forgot to ask a question. My name's Mark Landsoff. I live at three eight zero George Street. There's been an ongoing problem for the past thirty years since Albany Street's become a four-lane road. I have a couple of questions. At what point on Albany Street where the, where eighteen ends, does that road become a city responsibility? Because it's also a state road, twenty-seventh.
We have a map which indicates the areas of jurisdiction of any part of Street.
Is it rolling?
Yeah, according to the information we have in our files, it's city jurisdiction from Nelson Street up to Albany, except for the traffic light at George and Albany. That is a county...
Does it go up, pardon, sir, does it go up to the train station?
Yes.
Okay, I may have, I believe I may have spoken with you, sir, a couple of years ago. I had a...
Sir, if you would address the question.
Okay, I have a suggestion I brought to this gentleman. I'm sorry, that there should be a sign between Nelson and George on Albany, bringing to attention to drivers driving south to merge left before they get to the train station. There's a, it's been a constant problem where people come up to the train station in that right lane and then they try to squeeze and merge. Everybody sees the same problem. People who want to make a right onto Easton are not able to do it. It's always, any time of day, when there are more than five or six cars, the people who I think try to pass on the right anyway to go on twenty-seventh find themselves stuck. And if it's not the city's responsibility, I hope that somebody from the city who has that responsibility would make it the state's responsibility. Because you had, you voted on ordinance here tonight that Hamilton Street would be closed between College Avenue and George Street for...
For an event.
For an event. That is also a county road and you voted on that tonight. So I hope that it is also a county, it's Route five fourteen that goes all the way out to Flemington and starts up in Bayonne somewhere. It's considered a county road. Woodbridge Avenue coming down to Raritan Avenue across the bridge. And when it goes up from Johnson Drive and begin at the end of Hamilton Street, it is still a county road going out to Hillsborough and such. And you are, you voted on this ordinance tonight to close it off for an event. So I would hope that you would consider at least putting, having a sign put up there that says, between Nelson and George Street, would give people the opportunity to merge left as, continuing on Route twenty-seventh south, merge left here or something. So there'd be less of a problem.
Mr. Pittman, is that what I would address? Because I see, I know that that's a challenge sometimes. Is there something you can assist with that?
Signal at the train station at Easton and Albany is a county-owned and maintained signal. And they, in fact, just hired a consultant to redo that intersection or come up with a design to redo the intersection. So I will certainly pass that comment on to the county engineer that's working on that.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, one more thing. The new wonderful supermarket, which I'm a big fan of, there's a problem with many people who live up French Street who want to attempt to make a cross at French by the bridge. There is no official crossing there. All there is is a sign saying no left turn, which people ignore anyway, unfortunately. There needs to be a, I hope somebody would consider a flashing light as they have in front of the Johnson, the Johnson by the railroad bridge where they have the flashing sign, people crossing here. So people, it's hurt now. Somebody could consider it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Pittman? Name and address, please?
Tomell Pittman, too many of them seem to be above. I just had, well, my first question was, is there any particular reason all the city employees sitting in the front?
Am I asking? I don't know. You just have a particular reason when you're sitting there?
I mean, you guys see each other enough all day long.
Anything else? I don't think there's any of these...
Okay, so the general public...
Do you have more seating the other day in front with them?
Huh? No, normally, all these guys are in the back.
Oh, I can ask any people right here, you see the lid, remember? But there's none.
Okay.
But thank you, Mr. Pittman. Anything else?
Yeah, also, wanted to know the council's opinion on me ending the eleven-year reign of Bruce, I'm sorry, Matt Christie ending the eleven-year reign of Bruce Capp. Your opinion of being at this...
I don't have a, no opinion.
No.
Change is good. So I want to tell you, any situations...
Now, I'm glad you said that, change is good. I hope that, I hope that that stays recorded, you said change is good.
I don't have to, it's reported and I will say it aloud, change is good.
Thank you.
Make locations.
Wish you would've said that when, you know, he was letting innocent cops off for killing civilians, but you need to say that now.
I'm hoping I'll back, I don't know if we'll take it there or what I'm saying is I'm just making a general statement, but thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pittman?
I also want to inquire why it's so quiet that, you know, quiet about the shooting that took place just a few buildings down from City Hall. Like, if you go to a community resident, they have no idea that someone was shot on forty-six buyer street. And what measures are you taking to prevent that from happening again? Like, and I mean, the last council meeting, I asked what happened and captains told me that he's not going to disclose any information. And I wanted to know why, should it happen on Richmond Avenue? He was stood up proud and said how he's on this, you know, the police are doing everything they do to prevent it. But why is it so quiet that somebody got shot a couple buildings away from City Hall?
I don't know if it was why, Mr. Pittman, because it was in the newspaper when we sat over there. If you like, it's not...
It was in the newspaper. It was in the newspaper the next morning.
Who got shot?
We don't release the names of people that got shot. We never do.
Why?
Mr. Pittman, we also addressed that you indicated you have an office in that building. We discussed the drug dealing that was going on in that building. I put a thing out there, anyone that has information on the drug dealing, I'm talking. Please bring it to us if it helped stop the crime. We indicated it was a drug-related shooting. The victim and the suspect had prior knowledge with each other. We are investigating, you know, it's a further investigation. The address, without you stating the address, there's no need for me to reiterate it.
I mean, well...
It was on the newspaper, it was a big...
I understand that, but this is the same guy who, you know, was, for some kind of reason, just felt that he could stand up before and say, oh, well, you know what? Tomell Pittman's uncle was arrested for drugs, he initiated that. But when something happens downtown, it's like pulling out teeth to get him to talk about that.
I never said it was Tomell Pittman's uncle, you said it. I just mentioned the address.
I just, I want to turn, you know, like a discussion, let's stay, let's stay for the topic and like...
No, that is, that is part of the topic because he said that in the council meeting.
If you, let me finish. You're talking about the address on the incident, why is it quiet? The answer that it was on the newspaper. Captain Miller told me that there is some situation that nobody spoke the name of the person, of the person who did it. As a matter of fact, when we talked at the last meeting, I asked you if you're there, you have an office and if you knew that there was something going on, that you shouldn't have called the police. I would have prevented if you had seen something happening there. But I don't know whether you're talking about your uncle and all of that. I don't think that that's a forum for that right now. We're talking about the incident.
What I'm saying is, I have a legitimate concern. And when certain topics are brought up in these council meetings, I think the area it happens in, you guys are more or less quiet about certain situations. And you guys, you guys are, you know, you're glad about certain instances, what she did, you remember she's doing it. But when I ask them about this situation where I had, I have to go to that building at night, I don't, a lot of people don't like, I don't know if this was a staged shooting, that I might get off the elevator one night and somebody that actually a few doors down got shot at and he's being quiet about it? Or the city is not being as vocal as they would in the other circumstances? So I get off that elevator at nighttime, it's pitch dark in the hallway, and I happen to get shot. It can happen. I don't, listen, I don't trust you guys just as much as you don't trust me. So that's a legitimate concern, but he just downplayed it as if my safety isn't, isn't , isn't important.
I don't think that he's downplaying it.
He's downplaying.
He just saw me, he answered your question. Maybe why, you know, tell you why is the police department going to security...
That's what I'm saying. What is police department for this particular situation?
In that area, if there's anything to be done?
Could they put the mobile precinct there, maybe?
Can I, can I, can I?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Council Miller, if there's anything at this point that the police department is going to secure, you know, to...
Like I said, that shooting was a targeted shooting. The victim and the suspect know each other. It's not like it was a random act where there was violence on the street. It's being investigated by the detectives to apprehend the suspect and that's the way any other shooting of that nature would be handled.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir? Name and address, please?
My name is Tyrell Hicks, eight oh three Holland Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. I have an issue pretty much with the way things are investigated within the city, pretty much riding on the kilt of Mr. Pittman here. It's been going on for about a year or so now. I addressed it with Mrs. Gaden a while back when incident first occurred. I was dealing with the disorderly conduct complaint that was filed against myself. It was investigated, so-called investigated, by the Internal Affairs Department. They said that they couldn't prove or disprove that, you know, the incident was a false arrest or abuse of power, you know, and writing on the department, on the department's hat on behalf. Since then, you know, I've been going to court for about a whole year now. I'm scheduled to go again, April eighth, actually, in the city of New Brunswick. And I've been requesting discovery, you know, through my attorneys, through the lawyers and everything there with the municipal courts. And they're telling me, I know with the Internal Affairs, they're telling me that there's processing room videotapes and patrol car videotape that they viewed. And when I tried to request this discovery with the municipal court, the prosecution is telling me that there's no videotapes. So somewhere, there's something that's going on with the way that the city does investigate or someone's lying somewhere or not completely telling the truth in the incident, but yet this is carrying on. The incident stemmed from a Sam's Chicken altercation where there was a problem with freedom of expression. And now Sam's Chicken is totally out of the equation and it's become the state of New Jersey versus Tyrell Hicks. So with that being said, it's like, you know, through freedom of expression and videotapes were there and now they're not being provided, discovery has been carrying on and carrying on. I don't know if you recall Mrs. Gaden about the incident when me and Mr. Pittman came to your office and discussed everything. Even then, you said, you know, once we went over the statutes and criminal codes, you told me that like that it should be dismissed, you know? And here we have, I can't even get the videotapes of what the Internal Affairs had supposed to have investigated. So somewhere, the city is failing as far as, you know, prudent officers having their duties, protecting the Constitution and First Amendments, you know? And as far as producing proper justice for people who come and request discovery and, you know, we're subjected to coming and appearing in court. Court fees, law, public defender's fees and everything all brought upon, are all brought upon by the abuse of power, you know, just because you can write a document to subject someone to a court process, you know, which isn't right in exact as far as these officers go. And then there's no videotapes, but then there is videotapes. So I would, you know, basically just bring you up to speed on what's taking place since we've addressed the issue almost a year ago. This is still carrying on. What can we do to address those type of incidents where police abuse their power and violate the Constitution when they're supposed to protect the Constitution and freedoms of expressions and everything that we're granted with? You know, when we came into the meeting, we pledged allegiance to the flag and justice for all, but yet there's no justice.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes, I've taken your name down as Tyrell Hicks.
Tyrell.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hicks, I will talk to the municipal prosecutor tomorrow and get an answer relative to the presence or absence of discovery. And I'll convey that to Mrs. Gaden, since you're already in touch with her, you check with her either late tomorrow or on Friday, and she'll have an answer for you as to what I have found out.
All right. Thank you, Tomell. I really appreciate all the concern and resolve with that.
I'm not sure if we're talking about a video from Sam's Chicken or a video from the patrol car.
I have the documentation from the Terminal Affairs saying that there's processing room video and patrol car video, all in which the prosecution says there's no legal.
Okay.
It's been a whole year since, and I'm still subjected to this court process.
So we will follow Mr. Hicks and then you will follow, follow Mrs. Gaden. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comments? Yes, sir? Name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Alat. I'm from Livingston Campus, McLeod. And my name is, I'm working with NJ Perk's Save Our Oceans brand bag campaign. And just want, on behalf of our campaign, to let you all know that we are working to promote campus bag usage instead of plastic bags, since plastic bags are harmful to our environment and sea life. And we hope to see a plastic bag reign soon here in New Brunswick like several cities in California and other parts of our country. We are working with lots of students, students groups, and we're working on getting small business endorsements for getting more support for the campaign. And we already have over a thousand petitions supporting our campaign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have you done, what comments? And then, Mr. Pittman?
Second. Councilmember Anderson. Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.